The Runnymede Board of Education meeting is called to order. The Board of Education is in compliance with Chapter 231 of the Public Laws of 1975 entitled the Open Public Meetings Act. The time, date, and location of this meeting was appropriately advertised by notifying in retrospect as well as posting notices in the Verrill Hall, Runnymede Post Office, Maryville School, Align Bingham School, Grace Downing School, and the Runnymede Public School District website. Please rise and join us in the pledge allegiance to God.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, board members.
Mrs. Derrick.
Here.
Ms. Bebe.
Here.
Ms. Davidson.
Here.
Ms. Farrell, unable to make it this evening. Mr. Lego.
Here.
Ms. O'Brien.
Here.
Ms. Panzarella.
Here.
Ms. Samms.
Here.
Ms. Spalding.
Here.
Thank you also President Mark Iannucci, Super incentive schools; Dr. Sean McCarron, Business Administrator and Director of Curriculum Administration; Ms. Jay Yezzi, Principal Bingham and Downing School; Mr. Steve Peely, Principal, Bold School; Mr. Steve Maloney, Vice Principal, Bold School; Ms. Gladys Hubbard, the Director of Special Education; and Mr. Frank Heinz, Supervisor of Building and Grounds. At this time, I need a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes from February 21st.
Make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes from February 21st.
Second.
Motion made by Maria, seconded by Naomi. Any questions? Roll call.
Mrs. Derrick.
Yes.
Ms. Bebe.
Yes.
Ms. Davidson.
Yes.
Ms. Lego. Yes. Ms. O'Brien.
Yes.
Ms. Panzarella.
Yes.
Ms. Samms.
Yes.
Ms. Spalding.
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, at this time, you're up. Dr. McCarron for our board.
Nope, sorry. Before Dr. McCarron, I just want to let everyone in the public know that I appreciate and I hate doing this, give him credit for questioning. We received a couple of weeks ago regarding our cut that they were having. I think we've spent every single day of the week, and we thank for that, my day. He's contacted people in ways that I'm not sure are legal. We're very crafty in delivery, but it actually got an answer, Division of Taxation, which I didn't even know, you know, that was part of the thing. But you really have to recognize all the efforts he's put in, along with the entire staff at our offices as well. So what he's going to present tonight, blood, sweat, and tears, he doesn't have much here to begin with, we wouldn't have had any left. We'll get better news on Friday, but Dr. McCarron, I appreciate all your efforts.
We all do.
So unfortunately, I wish I was presenting better news, or I would have more information at this time. This is not my normal presentation. Usually, my April presentation is super nice because I presented March's presentation. There's not many changes. So in the 10 years I've been in this position, this is the first time that myself, or any business administrator for that matter, has had to deal with what's happening. So this is for the 2420, 2425 budget. So on February 28th was the announcement, so February 26th was the Governor's address. Governor gives his address, where he states, you know, he stood with all the legislators and all the political individuals who were there, and stated, "This is the first time ever that we are fully funding the school funding formula, and we are doing great things for kids," and they all stood up there. Many of the representatives who stood up there with him were beyond frustrated when they met with us after the fact, because they had not been given everything except told that the full formula was being funded, not realizing that Camden County had gotten hit in many of their schools, Runnymede being hit by far the worst within the state. So on February 28th, about a half hour before state aid numbers were released, I received a phone call from the county business administrator, who I've worked with for the past 10 years, who informed me that Runnymede, there's an anomaly, the exact word was used, an anomaly with Runnymede School District and the funding, and be prepared for what you're about to say. I'm like, "Oh." Like, $500,000, $700,000, she's like, "Worse." $4 million. So $4 million is a huge hit to our budget. It's 56% of our state aid. It's beyond anything anyone could ever even imagine. And as you know, we run, we run a tight budget. We have a lot of programs. We've worked really hard to build our programs, our facilities, everything that we have. So I was told that that was an incorrect number and that they would be in touch. So that whole week, we heard nothing. The county business administrator told me to simply, because remember, we had like three weeks to prepare from the time numbers were given to this presentation where we are submitting to the county office of education. So in that first week, we contacted the Department of Education, we were sent a voicemail. We didn't, we knew that there was an issue with the district income. Now, the district income is specific to taxpayers. When taxpayers do their taxes, and you put in your municipality code, which is 0430 for Runnymede, that is the number they call from, and I'm going to kind of explain that in the upcoming slides. So just so everyone knows, our state aid number that we receive state aid from is based on four areas. It's based on enrollment, it's based on meal status, in addition to limited English proficiency in special education, and it's based on equalized valuation, which is tax revenue coming into the district. And then the final one is on district income, which is the amount, as I just explained, okay? So between March 1st and March 15th, we participated in multiple local, county, and state meetings to discuss reduction in state aid. While many constituents were very helpful and wanted to help us, they were talking about fixing the formula and fixing the problem. For Runnymede, that's not going to help us, because we have a budget that needs to be prepared, and we need to make sure that we are set for the 2425 school year. We are, while there might be issues with the formula that we hope get fixed, we have issues right now that need to be addressed in order for us to be able to operate moving forward. I put down the enrollment, the low-income, limited English proficiency, special ed numbers, and equalized valuation. Because as you can see, 2122, 2223, 2324, and 2425, you can see from the enrollment, there's been some change, not much. You can see from our low-income, LEP, special ed students, 282, 242, 262, 272, we're very consistent. You can see from the equalized valuation, with tax dollars coming in, that goes up every year, of course, 387,402, 440, 494, and that's based on each year.
Does it count preschool students?
Does not include preschool students, because preschool students fall under the grant-funded piece. So when you look at that enrollment for here, preschool falls under a different category because they're funded separately. So the issue with our state aid numbers are due to the district income, which is the fourth category. This is pulled from the Department of Treasury, Division of Taxation, and that's actually an administrative code, which is our code law books that we follow as far as where this information comes from. What was interesting about everyone that I was talking to is not everyone realized where these numbers were getting pulled from. So when I would talk to the Division of Taxation, and they go, "We don't provide that number," and I would say, "It's in administrative code." And they would say, "Can you pass that on to us so we can look further into this?" It's very interesting sometimes to find out that piece. So when you look, 2122, Runnymede was 141 million, 2223, 152 million, and this is based on three years prior. So in 2122, it was based on 2018 numbers. In 2223, it was based on 2019 numbers. In 2324, it was based on 2020 numbers, where it dropped from 152 to 144 million. And then you will see, 2021, it goes from 144 million to 356 million, jumping over $200 million. Runnymede is a very small town. While there is some growth within Runnymede, there is not that much growth in Runnymede, because there's really not space for that much growth in Runnymede, as you would see in other districts. That $200 million jump changed our entire funding formula. And one of the major issues with that is, when you look at that as the one piece of the funding formula that changed the most, that's why it dropped us over $4 million in state aid funding, which is why they're saying it's an anomaly, because there's no major thing that they can indicate that would have caused that to happen. The main question, because of course, it's difficult when you talk to different offices, of who wants to take ownership over why Runnymede had this problem? Because no one wants to take ownership over why Runnymede had this problem. So we narrowed down what our questions were that we really wanted to ask people when we spoke to them, to just say, "Is the district income for 2425, the 356 million correct based on 2021 income?" That's the first thing we need to answer. Maybe there is someone who has $200 million that moved into town. However, as you say, consistency-wise, that probably wasn't the case. And in Runnymede, I'll be honest with you, we probably know if someone who had over $200 million moved into town, we would probably know that information. The second question I'm looking at now is, we'll deal with 2425's budget. I am more concerned now, even more so, about 2526's budget, and what the future looks like for our district and for what our state aid fund numbers are going to be. So what is the district income for 2022? And is this number similar to the 356 million? In talking with those departments, the Division, Department of Treasury, Division of Taxation was extremely helpful. But then when I called them back, because they said, you know, "Give me two days," when I called them back, they were unable to give me any further information at that time. Then all of a sudden, I wasn't hearing back from the state. We started, instead of going up from the state, from the county up to the governor's office, we started moving down, which many of you might have seen in the Facebook posts, asking for people to text, send emails, call. What's interesting about that, as Mr. Iannucci said, I was looking for any number to call. I was changing numbers at the back of the numbers at the state to see if anyone would pick up their phone, because it goes voicemail. That was an interesting process. I was sending emails to random email addresses. And what's funny is, the one day I sent emails to like 20 people at the Department of Ed, and we had people calling the governor's office, and we had different people sending text messages. All of a sudden, it was last Friday, I got a phone call from Tran. So I'm like, "Everyone stop what you're doing." Like, you know, cornered myself in an office, and it was one of the assistant commissioners from the Department of Ed. So that was about two weeks after we had received the information. And at that point, I had been told just to prepare for a flat-funded budget, which means that there's no change in state aid numbers. And that doesn't mean that we're getting the $4 million that we lost. That just means that while they try to figure it out, prepare for a flat-funded budget. So what they stated was, the Department of Ed acknowledged the fact that the number that we were given was incorrect. That was the first thing we wanted to know. Is the, is the district income number correct or not? The number is not correct. They were working with the Division of Taxation, Department of Treasury, to find out what the actual number was, but they were unable to give me any of that information. I will tell you, my office, Mr. Iannucci will confirm, looked like a crime scene, because we laid out like every single formula, we laid out every plan, we were like drawing lines between things to try and figure this out. But at this point, the other thing she told me is that, in their office, they were dealing with the legal department for the Department of Education to identify what the appeal process is. In code, it states that if the district does not agree with their state aid numbers, they may go through an appeal process. They do not have that appeal process in order, and they were working on what paperwork needs to be in place for that appeal process to happen. They also, because think, every school district was given their numbers. If our number was that incorrect, chances are other districts' numbers were incorrect. While we might have lost money, other districts might have gained money in other ways that we should have received something. So we don't have that answer, because they're not really giving us that information at this point. What I'm told at this moment is that I should be getting the appeal process this week. In most situations, I've been, we've been in contact with all our constituents, we've been in contact with Black Horse Pike, because if Runnymede was affected based on district income, Black Horse Pike has three district incomes, Runnymede being one of them. So we're in contact with Black Horse Pike as well, and their administrative team, as they're working on their side of that. So we are waiting for that adjusted number to come. The assistant commissioner was hoping to have more information to me prior to this meeting, as was the county business administrator. At this moment, they do not. She also recommended the state level that I prepare for a flat budget, not a $4 million cut budget, until they're able to get me a solid number as far as where our state aid number is. As a reminder, this meeting that we're doing tonight is for me to present to the board what budget that is getting presented to the county office of education for approval. And that's like one level of the Department of Education. And then when you, I get their feedback, and I make any changes that the state is telling me that I have to make, we then approve it in April for that final meeting. So I am telling you right now what I am saying in this budget presentation tonight. There will be changes, or you will have further updates in regards to what that final number will look like and what we will be doing. A few years back, when this happened with other districts, districts could apply to get funding back. They didn't get money back until December. That is not the situation for Runnymede, because they are saying that the number in the funding formula was not correct. They are adamant about the fact that the funding formula is correct. It was the number they were given, and they've made that very clear to me now multiple times. Any questions on that? The board members have heard it from me multiple times. They've heard this story. Okay, so on March 15th, I spoke with the assistant commissioner, Runnymede state aid number is incorrect. DOA is working with their legal department to create an appeal process. Runnymede should be able to begin the appeal process the week of 3/18. I have not heard of anything as of this meeting tonight. I was instructed to plan for a flat-funded budget at this time, while the New Jersey DOA awaits for more information from the Department of Treasury, Division of Taxation. While Runnymede receives the appeals, submits it back to the DOA, they will rerun our numbers for state aid, and we will get a new revised number that we will be going off of. It is their hope that we will have a finalized number prior to the public hearing, which is April 24. And that's where we are as of today. Points of interest for the 2425 budget. We've also been in contact with like our union president, we've been in contact with the PTA, we've been in contact with our building representatives. Because when something like this happens and things are in the news, we don't have much that we're able to tell, because we're still waiting for more information. But we also don't want people to go into panic mode, because we're still trying to run and operate a district and prepare, plan for the future. So we have been in contact with all those people to be, you know, ask us questions. If you have a question, if something doesn't make sense, if you write something in an article, there's pieces of information that have truth, and then there's pieces that don't. I've been sent so many articles that talk about, you know, Runnymede alone with all these other districts. In my opinion, Runnymede is not in the same situation as every other district that lost funding this year, because we don't know what our actual number should be, whereas the other districts are told that is your actual number, because all of the numbers that are put in the formula are correct. Just points of interest, health insurance was an increase of 9% this year for 2425 going into the new school year. Staffing, at this point, all staffing positions at a flat-funded budget, I want to be very clear with this, at a flat-funded budget, all staffing positions remain in place. There are no cuts, but there are no additional positions, because that is us keeping things as is. That also means, if people retire or resign from their positions, there are possibilities that those positions would be filled by people who are already in district, or people would be shifted over, or responsibilities would be divided until we have a better idea as far as where we are with all of our funding. Facility upgrades, this is something I wanted to discuss. Capital reserve account, we put money in our capital reserve account. And some people might be like, "How are you taking out capital reserve money if we're in a budget crisis?" So we have money in our capital reserve account. We have to take the money out at April's board meeting, because if we don't take it out at April's board meeting, we cannot take it out at any other point of the year. April is the time through board resolution that we can take out that money. So I think we have about $1.3 million in this budget. We are taking out a million dollars. That being said, we might not spend the million dollars. We might leave it right there until we figure out where things are. I've talked to Frank about what is absolutely required for our facilities to run versus what is not required, but just upgrades. And at that point, any money we don't spend goes directly back into that reserve account. We just can't take it out if we don't take it out now in April. So I don't want there to be confusion, if people see that money's coming out from maintenance reserves or capital reserves, that money is already in like, think of it like a savings account, you have it there, and you have the one time you're able to. And we ended up during COVID having mold in the one part of the building, and we had to shut down that entire wing and turn everything around within four to five weeks. The only reason why this Board of Education was able to do that was because of the money that we had in our maintenance reserve accounts, and they were able to do an emergency resolution with maintenance reserves. That is the only account you can do an emergency resolution as a Board of Education to get additional money out. Questions on that? Under funding, equalization aid is down 4.1 million. All other areas remain unchanged or slightly increased. So for example, we are a choice district, we have 13 choice students in our district, and we're capped at that. That number increased. I'm unsure where that came from. PEA funding, which is our preschool funding. We'll support eight classrooms, same as 2324, which is seven classroom at Wools, one classroom at Bingham. Many people have different ideas, and they'll say things like, "Well, why don't we cut the preschool program and use the money for the other areas?" It doesn't work that way. Our preschool is grant-funded, and if anything, our preschool funding is actually helping us support other areas of our district budget to ensure the fact that we will be able to operate and still provide services at the same level that we have prior. Same thing is true when you look at like Title I, Title II, Title III, Title IV. There's certain rules that I have to follow as a business administrator. For example, on those federal grants, we can supplement the grants, which means we can add to our programs to enhance them. We cannot supplant, meaning moving money over from a general account that we might have lost money from into a grant-funded account. I love all of the ideas, and I'm always open to taking ideas. Unfortunately, there's many reasons why they might not work, which is why I always say to people, "If you have specific questions, I would much prefer you ask. And if I don't have an answer, I'll tell you I don't have an answer. But if I do have an answer, I'll be able to at least explain it." And then of course, we still have our areas where we generate money and areas that we've saved over the years, which is with food service, before and after care, and transportation. So like right now, we are no longer going out for special education transportation. We're able to do all of that in-house, and we do all of our regular runs in-house as well for Bingham, Downing, and Wools. Any questions on those areas? 2425 tax levy. As of right now, our tax levy for 2324 was $7,807,323. With a 2% increase, that brings it to $8,017,642. Enrollment adjustment. The Department of Education does enrollment adjustments based on student enrollment as far as number of students in your school, and there's a slight enrollment adjustment when your numbers increase. So I want to say, Runnymede's numbers have gone up over the years slightly, and you know, I showed you that back on the other slides, as far as where we were. 766, they went down to 732, 735, up to 751. So you can see that they are increasing over the years. And that does not include preschool, as Mr. Iannucci stated. Enrollment adjustment can be increased by $53,110. And then we always talk each year, especially when we were receiving the ARPSR funds, which were the COVID funds. So there were three types of federal grants that came out over the years. Members started out as cares, then it was the ARPSR 2, and then it was ARPSR 3. Those funds expire as of this upcoming September 30th. We no longer have any of that funding or any of that money left. And for the most part, because they want us to expend that money by the end of this school year, we are very close to doing that as well. But you can see in 2122, we have $150,000 in bank cap. That's money from the tax levy that the district did not take. In 2223, we have $37,000 that we did not take, and in 2324, we have $215,000 that we did not take. So totaling that we're able to take, it would bring in $8,421,903. Once again, this is a difficult budget to present, as I don't have a final number as far as where we are with what we're getting from the state, or not getting from the state at that point. Facility projects, if we're taking this money and I'm discussing it, it's a million dollars withdrawal, and right now, I have to say where the money would be coming from. Flooring projects, we still have carpeting in some rooms, old carpeting that needs to be pulled and abated. We put $120,000 on there. We are reviewing some bathroom tile and flooring if we were to do that. HVAC, $280,000. We have HVAC projects throughout the district that would have to be upgraded, putting them on networks so that we were able to control them remotely from different locations. Asphalt, $400,000. One of the biggest issues that we do have is over Downing, there's a drainage issue. So the reason why that asphalt number is so high is because of a French drain that would have to be put in, so that way there isn't flooding in the one gymnasium. It's very interesting, depends on which way the rain is coming. There are some heavy rains where we have flooding in that lower gym. There are other rains where you're, you know, praying for it, praying that you get nothing, and there's absolutely, it's strays a boat. So there's really no answer besides which way it's coming. Building upgrades throughout all three schools, $80,000. And then doors, upgrading the interior doors at Bingham and Downing, and that is about $120,000. There are a few doors that have to be fixed at Wools. Any questions on facility projects? Now, the other thing too is, we're having a doom and gloom conversation right now in terms of where we are with the budget, and this is not a happy conversation. What's awful about this is, within the next week, they might be like, "Oh, like, there's a possibility, the number that they actually put into the formula could possibly give us an increase in money." So last year, we got additional $600,000 in state aid. We don't know what the number is. So we have to be ready for all plans that are in front of us, and being ready to move forward with, even though we might not move forward, Frank is still getting quotes on all of these projects, so that way we're able to move forward. Should we choose to move forward with it, and should we get different answers? Okay, this is, this is like the cryptic, the cryptic's unknown. Angel's laughing, because I'm sure she understands what it, what it looks like. So what this is, is this is actually the entire state aid formula. I'm really not going through all of this, but you can see that there are different numbers for each day. So on the left-hand side, it is all enrollment. So it starts with 751, it multiplies it at 13,946, it then times it by, I think it's the GCA, which is Governmentful Comparable Average, a .97670, and then you times that by A, which is the enrollment. Then you do that for all these different letters, and you follow the formula, and you get to your bottom number on the left-hand side, which is 13,887. On the right-hand side, you can see it's equalized valuation, which is our tax, taxes coming in from businesses, which is the one number. You then see the district income, which is the second number. The difference in those two brought that number up so high to over $12 million, which brought our equalization aid to $1,727,000. It's normally in the 6 millions, 6,200 last year, I think it was. So it dropped it over $4 million based on that formula. So you can see where the district income had that effect on the overall outcome of where we are. I know way too much about the funding formula at this point. So the board will be approving the tentative budget to submit to the county office. I actually have to submit it this evening to the county office, it is due tonight. And then from there, we are hoping to get information from the state. The one way in which I'm able to submit it is that they added a line on the revenue screen for certain districts to use, Runnymede being one of them, that's entitled "Imbalanced Budget." And on that one line of money coming in, it says $4,150,000. And that is me showing that I'm doing a flat-funded budget based on the number that we received last year in equalization aid. And that's how I'll be able to submit this evening. Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. McCarron. Thank you again. At this time, there is no correspondence, so we can go into public comment on agenda items only. I think it's appropriate this time to, because I haven't been in the habit of reading the proper public comment recognition of citizens, so I'm going to do that this, this month. The public is reminded that they should attempt to resolve problems and/or complaints through initial contact with the staff member or members involved therein, and the chief school administrator prior to petitioning the Board of Education. Complaints should only be brought to the board after the appropriate school staff has had a reasonable opportunity to resolve the problem at the employee level. Statements should be limited on topics to be addressed on the public agenda at this time, and limited to length in three minutes. The board president will recognize those individuals in the audience who wish to comment on any action items on this agenda. Please respect the following procedures. Be recognized by the board president, state your full name and address, identify the resolution and/or item number which you wish to comment, wait to be recognized before you make your comment, limit your comment to specific resolution or items, and limit your comment, again, to three minutes per person. At this time, is there any public comment on agenda items only? No? Okay. Mr. Iannucci, sir.
I will not take up too much time tonight. The marijuana district vote has not changed. Dr. McCarron, you've delivered his pleasure presentation. We are planning still for end-of-year activities, spring, summer, all that good stuff, summer program, ESY, those dates will be coming out shortly. Tonight, there are two school calendars. One is revised for this school year. We had to add a day to the calendar for this new year we had back in January. And then next year's school calendar is also up for review tonight. Are there some slight changes on that?
I didn't know. I didn't say a thing about your calendar. Usually I do, but I didn't say one word about it.
Couple, couple changes. The staff will be coming in the Tuesday after the end of this year. Thursday, where students feel a full day, on that Thursday, they don't have their days.
We were actually saying that we liked that, the kids have it so cool. And it wasn't the day after Labor Day, you know, that we're trying to get them out, but we were saying.
So, that's another thing. We also, some input from staff as well as parents of the conference schedule. Shift that away from Thanksgiving week area because I know it's busy. Mr. Morris, you know, kind of takes that piece out. So we did kind of move that up a little bit. And again, that will, after approval, will be sent out to all district families tomorrow. That's basically kind of the only major calendar shifts that we have here. Roundtable, reviewed. Everybody kind of complained about the ones that were across Kansas. They're disruptive. It's not a good thing, as Dr. McCarron said. Some of those districts are being told that they're accurate, so that's going to be beneficial for them. Today, we did participate in M O A. Mr. Phil and I went down, along with the chief of police. Not only remember in the agreement, but they also did some presentations on prosecutor's office, on artificial intelligence, cyberbullying. What was the other one I had? And I was paying attention, I promise. Mr. Phil, you remember letting out. But one of the people from the prosecutor's office is actually a parent in camp. So I think Mr. Phil reached out half after the meeting. So hopefully, he's going to come do a presentation for the kids. I think he said it was geared towards fourth through eighth grade.
They're lower in the age because by high school, it's really.
And they also gave us some things that we can do with, you know, students in need of services if something goes wrong. So we're going to be contacting them as well. So it was a good presentation, timely. I do appreciate you being there. And last but not least, thank you again, Mrs. Panterella, for all your hard work with the, our end weekend. And the staff that participated had a good time. And some of the students, some of the staff members' kids, including my own, had a great time playing in that game. So we do appreciate your efforts. And everybody else was at a great time. Hopefully, next year, we can get that second win.
Hey, man, it was the first time.
It was a good time. So thanks to those coaches too, they did a great job. We always want to, always want to see you. Thank you.
Publicly, can I thank the staff? Mrs. Wilson. It would not be possible without her. She takes a personal day on Friday, helps with everything, sits there all weekend with a portable heater and the best of you of Harrod Williams. She runs, she goes, she goes to the home meals. She is the biggest asset.
And your sandwich, slice of pizza.
No, we tell her homemade meatballs, keep her in check. Thank you to the, all the staff who donates towards the baskets. The business office for their very generous donation. We reached our goal of $20,000. I thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Mark? The business administrator, Dr. McCarron?
Besides the budget, besides the budget presentation, right now, we are finalizing all observations. We're coming up on spring break. It kind of always feels like right after spring break, it's the end of the year and everything. So to try to get all of those observations in and done. And then also, we are in the process of finalizing all plans for testing. Been working with both Vol's and Bingham and Downing in terms of getting their testing schedules set up for students to be ready to go with that. So we are all set up, and then our E S L testing just finished this past week.
Any questions for Sean? I think we've heard from him enough. No, actually, thank you. I know, I appreciate you reaching out to all nine of us. It takes a lot of time. District reports, principals, nurses, building and grounds, and special education reports. Any questions there? No? Okay. P T A report?
Rose here, I still heard.
Row, you have anything coming up for us?
And Lindsay and Missy, they're all A T As.
Anything we should know, Bill?
There's, the Bingo is tomorrow. Fourth grade through.
Yeah, I think it's the older kids, yeah.
It's the older kids. Bingo is tomorrow. I really don't have my.
That's fine, no pressure, just.
She's really just here as herself.
I know, I know, then we can call you out. All right, well, you'll let us know, we'll let us know. Thank you. You guys had a beautiful Founder's Day dinner. Sorry I couldn't be there, I was away, but everything looked amazing as usual. Committee reports, anyone have any updates for us with their committees this month?
I went to the legislative meeting. It was a webinar, so I just have a few things real quick. We have a new commissioner of the Department of Education. His name is Kevin Danner. And so, we don't, I don't know too much about him, but I'm going to learn. And the next meeting is probably going to be there. The other thing is that the Department of Education is starting to recruit veterans to work with their tech programs. They're going to have a pathway to certify veterans, give them civilian jobs, so that, say that they have a talent in woodworking or auto mechanics, they're going to train them so that they will have a teacher certification for the tech schools. And then, they're also, the commissioner is trying to pass the free lunch for 2024 and '25, and they're saying that there's an increased amount of children that are living in poverty. And I think he said it went up 225% over the last year, which is a lot of children.
Trying to increase the income, or he wants it for all?
Wants it for all students.
That would be great.
And then the last thing, they're going to be doing public funds that will be available for different charter schools for building upgrades, that they would be able to take a loan out from the Department of Education and then pay it back. And that would help them to do some building upgrades to their current buildings that they have. And then, I don't have.
They have to hand that out to public schools? Or they just take in $4.5 million away from us?
I don't have any.
Okay, all right, just checking, just checking.
The next meeting isn't until June.
Okay, next meeting soon. Thank you, thank you for representing Runnymede.
You're welcome.
Anything else? I feel like we just met, so I feel like I, of course, it's been a short month for me. Nothing else on their unfinished business, so we'll move to new business. Under property and transportation, I need a motion to approve items numbers one and two.
I'll make a motion for items number one and two.
Motion made by Patty, second by Barbie. Any questions? Roll call.
Ms. Dare.
Yes.
Ms. Beebe.
Yes.
Ms. Davidson.
Yes.
Mr. Lego.
Yes.
Ms. O'Brien.
Yes.
Ms. Panterola.
Yes.
Ms. Samz.
Yes.
Ms. Spalding. Yes. Under personnel, we need a motion for items numbers one through seven. Thank you, Maria.
Second.
Got the early first, I'm sorry, however. Any questions there? Roll call.
Ms. Dare.
Yes.
Ms. Beebe.
Yes.
Ms. Davidson.
Yes.
Mr. Lego.
Yes.
Ms. O'Brien.
Yes.
Ms. Panterola.
Yes.
Ms. Samz.
Yes.
Ms. Spalding.
Yes.
Get out and recognize Maria Sarava. She's worked at our preschool now for a number of years. Doing a great job as the director. So we're excited for our next chapter, or we're going to miss her. Congratulations, Maria.
Yes. Under finance, although it looks long, it's one through seven, please.
I'll make a motion for items one through seven.
Motion made by Angel.
Second.
Seconded by Patty. And there, as you can see, is the tentative, the tentative budget. Any other questions? Roll call. You good?
Ms. Dare.
Yes.
Ms. Beebe.
Yes.
Ms. Davidson.
Yes.
Ms. Lego.
Yes.
Ms. O'Brien.
Yes.
Ms. Panterola.
Yes.
Ms. Samz.
Yes.
Ms. Spalding.
Yes. Under curriculum, items one and two, please. Items one and two, all right. Motion made by Barbie, seconded by Maria. Questions? Roll call.
Ms. Dare.
Yes.
Ms. Beebe.
Yes.
Ms. Davidson.
Yes.
Ms. Lego.
Yes.
Ms. O'Brien.
Yes.
Ms. Panterola.
Yes.